Not died. But instead, I went to the occult and I told them that they cannot jail me, that they cannot kill me, and Buhari, where he was alive, that he is a madman.
Yes, you said it.
Sometimes I find it very, very astonishing that some people that cannot muster the courage to speak to a yellow people at the end of the road, where they come from, will have the temerity to question the validity of our claim to Biafra restoration and to have the nerve to question our determination. If you had any doubt before you came here today as to how serious we are, I am sure by the end of this year, you will no longer have any need to doubt us. You know how serious we are.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
When they came to my house to kill me with a battalion of soldiers, Nigerian Air Force, Nigerian Police, DSS, Mobile Police, Military Police, just name it. As I have said on numerous occasions, we lost twenty-eight men. They died because of you, that Biafra may come, that you may rediscover who you are once again and stop dwelling in a foreign land. The mistakes of the past will come to haunt us if we fail to grasp these very opportunities before us to support everything that IPOB is doing to ensure that Biafra is restored as quickly as possible. If you fail to restore Biafra, you will die in shame. If you fail to restore Biafra, you will just be a footnote in history. But if you help to restore Biafra, your place in history will never, ever be forgotten. I found in the USA a long time ago, some men were taken from somewhere near Onisha. Their wives and their children, they brought them to this country. As some of you may know, or as some may not know, they went to a place, it's called Savanna, is that correct? In Georgia.
Savannah, Georgia.
The Igbo landing. I've been there. I don't know how many of you have been to that very place. I have been there. When the white man asked me, when I was back in my business in England, he said, "Why must you decide to do a critique of dependency theory?" I said, "Because I am descended from this part of Biafra. We, our men, consider it an honour to be dead than to be slaves to fellow men." They're unique privilege. I consider myself lucky to be born an Igbo man and a Biafran. It is the best part that anybody can have in life if you come from Africa, I assure you. But some of us don't know what it means. We have jettisoned our pride. We have mortgaged our sense of self-worth. We announce servants to those who between nineteen forty and nineteen sixty, we are not considered good enough to be a white man. When Igbo Union used to hold sway in the zoo called Nigeria, Igbo Union represented the finest thing. In a Biafran, it encapsulated everything beautiful about an Igbo person. Not of Anese. I said, "Ibo Union" that built Abba National High School. Do you know that? Do you know that? In fact, it was Igbo National, is that correct?
Yes.
Before the remainder. Since that very time, Chukotika Biamma gave us a bit of a light in Mbagwe. Mbagwe came and that light was my jollyest wish. And after Mbagwe left, the state has been left bereft of men of ideas, men of conviction, men of very deep intellect and men who can be relied upon in terms of crisis. What we have now are artificial Igbo men, artificial Biafrans, people that find solace in serving people that ought to be serving them. Some of you are here today because now you realize that the Fulanis are getting very closer to your villages. Is that correct? Very close. And I ask you, who do you think is going to stop them? Who will stop Fulani from taking over your villages? It's only IPOB, but because of God.
Yes, sir.
I said, "Only IPOB can. No other person will." They lack the metal, they lack the stomach, and they are not brave enough to confront this very clear and imminent danger that is confronting each and every one of us. I came here in twenty fifteen, not too far from the hotel where I'm staying. I told the World Igbo Congress then to give me guns and to give me bullets that you in the USA need defending. They did not believe me. But today, every organization around the world is looking for IPOB because they have now realized that we have always been right. There is nothing I say that doesn't come to pass. Everything I say comes to pass. I mean, everything. It may sound wretched and pathetic to you. It may sound unrealistic to you. It may sound like a joke to you, but in the end, it comes to pass. It comes to pass because Chukotika Biamma is sending you a message through us. Some of you will not listen. And those that will not listen, your land will fall to the Fulanis. Those that fail to listen, they will be cannibalized in the process. Your daughters will be abducted, your mothers will be raped, and your wives taken away from you, you being extorted on a daily basis. The largest checkpoints you have anywhere on earth is in Biafra land.
That's right.
There is no federal presence in the land that the oil and guns that sustain the zoo comes from. We have now been reduced to begging for the position of ordinary secretary to government. That is how low we have fallen. That is how foolish we have become due to a combination of cowardice, jealousy, greed, envy, and gossip. Because the only way that a Biafran, a innocent Igbo man, the only way a Biafran can rise up is by gossiping the brother or the sister to Fulani people, to Yoruba, those that doubt what we say. You have heard what the doctor said yesterday. It was yesterday, wasn't it?
Yes.
They withheld his certificate to the Senate, you know, like a little child. He was jumping up and down, begging for it. They said, "Are you willing to condemn your people?" He said, "Yes, please give me a certificate." "Are you willing?" He said, "Yes." The same man that have spent four years telling you that we should vote for APC in order for Igbo presidency to come in twenty twenty-three, only yesterday said, "There is nothing like Igbo presidency anymore." Am I correct?
Yes.
Unano yan?
I know Yan. Yes.
But it's an Igbo leader.
In Okoraosa Town.
An awesome man planted in your midst to convince you to turn your brain against IPOB for four years. At last, when he got to Abuja, he declared before the war that his people are irrelevant. They no longer matter this group of things. That everything happened to us, we deserve it. And they are your leaders. Before the Fulani man came to kill me, they sought the permission of two people, British government and so-called Igbo leaders. And they gave them the godhead to kill me. Yes, Igbo men did. Ananese and your so-called governments. They gave Fulani people permission to come this year, my friend, to kill our people. And now I ask you this question. How many times have you heard that a northern governor asked the army to come and kill Boko Haram? As they, we are busy twisting all of your brains against IPOB and against myself. They, we are busy preparing for the invasion of our land. You know, you're not hearing about it. Some of you here don't know what is happening back home because they deliberately start you of that very information. The Zambian have been during the war. Enugu failed after only three months of the war starting. As we are fighting in Abaga, in Oka, in Onisha. As we are fighting each by each, every territory of land in our place. People in Enugu, we are going to school. Are you aware of that? They were going to school in Enugu? Yes. Because Enugu failed after only three months. People in Enugu did not know what was happening at Okiwe. This is where you are today because all your news media is being controlled by people that don't wish you to be alive, I tell you. They want you dead. There are good people. As with every society, you have to go the bad and the very ugly. The same way it is over there in the west is how it is in the east. They went through our land conversing for the prescription of IPOB, for the targeting of myself and IPOB as a terrorist entity. But today, I travel more freely than Jubilee also that day. I travel more freely than Glatay. I travel more freely than all girls who are in charge of the persecution of innocents. It is you. To let the world know that we're not terrorists, all we are asking for is an opportunity to be free. But the greater burden lies in your hands, all of you. Here gathered today. If you want Biafra to come, Biafra will come. If you prefer to be slaves or here, it's voluntary slaves in America. Because before it was by force, now it's voluntary. If you want to be voluntary slaves in America, you're more than welcome to do so. But understand this very thing, that the more you reside here without fighting to be free, the more you are saying to yourself and to the whole world that you are worth less than an animal. I'm telling you the truth. If you don't have any share, you will remain in America. You will oppose IPOB. You will not join us in what we are doing. You will find every excuse that will back off this very great movement. But as one zoo lawyer said, senior advocate of the zoo, Ozakon, he said that IPOB's agitation is historic, that the foundations of the zoo is shaking to today's post of IPOB, that Fulanis have not come into your villages to pick you one by one because of IPOB, that the zoo, including Yorubas, that they are still living is because of IPOB.
That's true. Hamadike.
But they know how to divide us and they do it very well, have it been well.
Yes.
I remember it was in two thousand and fifteen it was, when we were making our offers to our cousins in the coastal region, especially the Jaws. Tumpolo went and did a press statement. He's still on my team today, saying that a bigger masquerade like Buhari is cutting him. Who is sitting on the car? All these things are documented that he circled, that online you can find if you look for it. But the same person that he aligned with has been persecuting him and his village that led to the death of his father till this very moment.
Yep.
His village was occupied only last week by the army. Again. And that is why I said to them, "Anytime you work with Fulani, you spend yourself with that nonsense called Nigeria." You will always return in shame. It doesn't matter how long it takes. Eventually, they'll discuss you. Now, Fulanis, they come to Anambra and they kill us because Jubilee, or should I say the Kabao, led by Abakiyari, confirmed, oh, they are not in power for another four years. Now, Fulanis can come into Anambra and kill as many of us as possible. The governor, that is the chief secret officer of the state, will not say anything. And now I ask some of you here, what is your justification for supporting these people that are against us? Our enemies come all the time to kill us and they do nothing. They went out of their way to ask an individual to kill us in our own land. Some of you talk about it in glowing terms. Some of you even go as far as trying to acknowledge them. But they are the source of your problem and they will lead to your destruction because they cannot see. And so we are coming here. It occurred to us, I think there was a bid who reminded us that that thing that Otman Danfodio said and the Sadwana echoed, that they will conquer us and use us as they're willing to use, willing tools or whatever it is.
Willing slaves.
That they will conquer us all the way to the ocean. Have you read it? Have you all read it? If you have read it, what are you doing about it? Tell us a good question. You know, again, it occurred to me that that is the reason why the same universities here in America that some of our fathers went to, that fellow Americans went to, they can build roads and bridges and good hospitals and good schools and beautiful airports, but the same thing is not happening where I come from. But they went to the same university. Some of you graduated on top of your classes, isn't it? And the whites came second. Have you asked us all these questions? Why is it that they can build a very compelling civilization here? But you are here doing security job. That means there is something, we are not getting something right. We are disconnecting something in our brain and it's now time to fix it. And that time is now. You see, I don't believe that the white man is God. I believe that God is Chukotika Biamma in heaven. That the way we are today is as a result of how we reason. We don't reason very well. We don't do things properly. We told you year after year, month after month, week after week, day after day, hour after hour, on radio Biafra, that Fulanis are coming. They will come, they will kill you, they will take your land. You said we are stupid.
It's happening in life.
And what the world said then, he said that I did not fight the war, that I'm trying to bring war to our land. And here, okay, here, no other. Is that correct?
Yes.
Today, what I can see from inside the dungeon of DSS, those of them flying business class and first class cannot see it in the air. And they are your leaders. There is one reason why I love this country. Before they vote for you as a president, you know what they ask you? There is one question. Every four years, they ask the same question. If you pay attention, you will know. You know what the question is? Can we trust your judgment? Is that not true? You know, it doesn't sound that there is no sensationalism to it. So some of you may have taken any notes on it. But it's the question they ask all the time. Can we trust your judgment? Can you see things and articulate a solution before that problem gets to us? Because by the time the problem is, it was too late. No, they couldn't see anything. Your so-called elite. None of them could save it. None of them prepared to save you. They abandoned you. They asked the army to come to your towns to come and kill you. Operation Battle Dance, Operation Show of Force. Whereas in the north, where they have the foremost dangerous groups in Africa, they have Operation Laffy Adore, which is Operation Restore Peace.
Peace.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
That where the people are peaceful, they are doing show of force. And some of you very foolishly supported them. And today, our communities are under siege and they're able to share it, to acknowledge it. And some of you still refer to Anese as the apex sociocultural organization. A group they put together for you, I appointed who the leadership should be, tell them what to do, and they do it. When it's too late, they turn around and tell you, "Oh, Nigeria can no longer be won." When did he say it? Yesterday.
Yeah, on Friday, yeah, yesterday.
Yesterday.
That's right.
The same man that said that Enambekan is finding the embers of war, today he has realized that Nigeria is unsustainable. There's something I told him in the city room, "You cannot stop the zoo." It is not rocket science. No matter what you do, Nigeria will never love you.
At all. That's true.
It doesn't matter what you do, they will love you. I also said it a long time ago, many months ago, that Dino Bu will put Yoruba into trouble. And today, Yoruba people are now from Fennelwa and told them, "Dino Bu's ambition for the presidency will save the Yorubas." And today, Fulanis are there. They cannot talk because it's either you fight the Fulanis and lose the presidency or you allow them to take over your land so you can be president. I hope you're following me very carefully.
Yes.
Our fight is to serve everybody. My little bet, one of senior men, including Yoruba people, including the TY Danjuma that fought us during the war. His name is Theophilus. He's a Christian.
That's right.
The one is so ashamed. They are killing his people, he cannot longer talk.
Amen.
I told them that the zoo, if they don't give us Biafra, if you remember, that someone here would be better than Nigeria. I said it. Then you know when you busy and you're busy, then you...
Uh huh. Oh, Hamadike.
And before we leave the zoo, we are going to fight our way out. You may not like it, but it's the truth because you left it too late. It's your fault. You know that Elohim is very wonderful. The Jews, our cousins in Israel, made this same foolish mistake we are making today. Foolish mistake. They left their land, went to foreign lands, built cinemas, as some of you did. You do something in Virginia, is that correct? Igbo village.
Igbo village.
I will go there and destroy it. That means you're not planning to go home again, huh? Isn't it? Instead of you to go home and see what is happening, you go to Virginia and see that houses. You feel good within yourself that you've arrived. You've done something for the people.
No.
Whereas you're contributing to a restriction as a race. The Jews survived because they had their language and their religion. They mean that before they can revive themselves, they need what is called a commonality, one common thread that runs through all of them. If it is not the religion, it is the language. You go to houses here in a land, very affluent, very rich Jews are here. All of their children speak Hebrew. Do you know that?
That's right.
Do you know why they speak Hebrew? The reason why he speaks in profanest or in Ardeh is to direct your words so that it will hit the mark. Is that not correct? I said this to you.
Yes.
Ah, this is not a big game.
Mban. Mban.
In African slang, is that possible?
No.
Is that what you? Am I making a research here?
Yes.
It's a camera image.
Oh, Kamil.
Inside you, in the plan, it stays that way and it works. The Edo made the leader was one of the ones in British. Successfully. In the same way, in the name of today, that they said doesn't belong to us. The same elders, intelligentsia. Leaders of thought and leaders of student. They abandoned Anyoma. Is Anyoma a Muslim or witch?
No.
And Yomo, why can't they have a son?
Mban.
They abandoned it. Some of you don't know that Igbo man, you have a, or had Igbo man with a little government to people there, yes? And I... And I'm also here, foreigners here. Let me correct myself. Came after the war, decided to divide Ebemah into three. There is one Ebemah in Delta State. One Ebemah in River State. In Yibo State, listen carefully. The one in Delta, Ebemah, the same family, the same people, they are not Hebrew. The Ebemah in River State is not Hebrew, only the one in Yibo. You all kept quiet in Abanki. Instead of you to compete with the foreigners or those actually reversing you, you want to compete with your next son, maybe your own brother, your own flesh, your own blood. And as you're fighting, in Harina, one, very valuable food, one-on-one, they keep cutting us apart. You don't want to go and be like them, because the only one who is to impress somebody from next village, the competition. But that person helps your enemy. Your enemy is the foreigner. Because they want you dead, not you. You take about one. This country, people have passed a victory, yes, they are like. From where? I ask all of you to do what Ohanese should have done six, seven years ago, which is to listen to IPOB. To listen to us and our prescription for curing these very illness are treating us. Because if you sit and do nothing in LA, and I'm done telling you it will not happen. It happened to the Hafan people. It happened to Titi people. It happened to the Bata Mas. It happened to Lupe people. It happened to the Juput people. All of this profound. So don't say it won't happen to you. It will happen to us if we keep quiet. Or maybe, maybe it's what we want. I think so. I think so. Because if we are serious about getting ourselves out of this mess, starting from this very moment, we should make it a point of duty to get everybody around us to believe that our freedom is the only way out. No other way. I read the EU report, have you read it? That came out today. I got that, I got the EU report election in this year.
Oh, okay, okay.
Did you read it? Who wrote it here? Was he not very clear that Hebrews are stopped from voting in Lagos? In Abuja, in Tani? Did they mention it in the report?
No.
Did they mention it? Is to let you know that your enemies are more than you can imagine. If you listen to Ohanese in Udaan, if you listen to those top officials in Udaan, if you listen to the oppositions in Udaan, there is only one remedy. One, one remedy, not two, not three, not four, one only, and it's IPOB. And there is no duplicate. There is no counterfeit in IPOB. If it is not IPOB, it is not IPOB. Because foreigners is replicating everything we are doing to confuse and to convince some of you. I won't be surprised as I'm here talking to you. They are raising their children, perhaps to talk somewhere else. Everything we have, they have greatly doubled to confuse you. All the names they found us is today haunting them. The same Abass Angela, who you know to run with Miss Gads? Was he the one who gave us that? And it'll be the next story. I'm going to Houston, Texas. I want a Biafra t-shirt with Miss France written on the back. I want to wear it here. He called us Miss Gads. But today, he agreed with Miss Gads. And went as far as saying that if not for the people who are prepared. The people who are prepared are there.
Southeast.
And who is that is very impossible?
IPOB. IPOB. That's right.
This is from Abbas Angela knows something that some of you don't know. Can you even people see who that people are in this business from where? Because in those days, I keep saying in every time, everything that I go to. When my uncle came to US to study, they take up, I was here. On his way back, my grandmother said, they went through the way. You know, our women, they were too scared, not one. They brought out the outside there. They asked him not to enter into any vehicle. That our young men should not carry him on his head. They placed their wrapper on the floor, on the ground, and he was walking until he got to Salah's company. That is who we are in those days. In those days, if you call first, second, or third, they got laxed. It doesn't matter who you are, anybody you see around the road, if we get back in Tapa, will give you something because you did well. Because as somebody that grew up in the village, I'm a good girl when a new child is born. You know, here they call it to visit baby shower. Our baby shower is down outside, is it down outside? Your grandmother will speak from her village. We start to make marriage powder. Is that not correct? Along the road, allowing your parents to hold one who know. Until she gets to village. And then, your father's mother or aunt or whoever will take over. Everybody will rock powder and they will rejoice and gladness. Is that correct?
Yes.
These are some of the values you have lost by coming to America. I'm not saying that coming to America is not good, or those of us that went to Atlanta is not good, but it's for you to go and learn something and bring it back home. Only then will the Europeans of the Western world respect you. Japan did it. Today, Japan enter here peace and free, is that correct?
That's right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I am sure that Malaysia took here as well with very minimum force. Singapore can come here. But the republique is true, was bigger than Singapore.
That's true.
You don't know that? Or is it Dubai and not the rest of them? Ask yourself this question. Why is it that other part of the world are growing only Africa, black Africa? Every blessed day, it's going backwards. The way we reason is very, very bad. And we end up feeling sorry for ourselves every blessed day. And that is why we are here. And my only reason I was saying is not very hard, okay, okay? If you celebrate death, death will come. Do you know that? Do you know? It's something with death. It's not done that way. Seeking kingdom of heaven first. That kingdom for our own purposes is Biafra. Once you seek Biafra first, every honor is yours, and that's the good story.
He has spoken. Martinique has spoken.
Then the world can respect us. Humanity can respect Biafra. As I spoke to them two days ago, I went to a very important meeting. They asked me, why do you want Biafra so desperately? That freedom for Biafra means the destabilization of West Africa. And I asked them, who was destabilized when Soviet Union collapsed? They couldn't answer me. I asked them, who was destabilized when the Slavs they collapsed? They could not tell me. Who was destabilized when Ismaila was carried out of Indonesia? Who collapsed when Albania and Kosovo became independent? I don't stay to the mind. If nothing happens to Soviet Union, a nuclear power, nothing will happen to us in West Africa. I'm telling you this because this is the argument they prefer at your state department. You know that Zakaria Mohammed, that's her name, isn't it? That lady, the deputy UN chief. Zena, Zena, is that Mohammed?
General Mohammed.
Thank you. Do you know that foreigners are working for the freedom of the Sahawar, is this? Sahara, is that right? Imagine a bookie talking about self-dedication. And it's public, they're not hiding it. They said we will do everything within our powers to make sure that those foreigners there and they are free, they have their own country. And then they go and they convince TK for the money to attack IPOB, asking for your freedom. The freedom to control your destiny, your whole resources, is your own land. The freedom from being killed every blessed day, in the north. I don't have any projector. I would have shown you a picture of people that died, I think that was yesterday. Along Apapa.
Oh, Apapa, yeah. Yeah, the container. That's right.
They died on the spot.
On the spot. The container fell.
And somebody said, why?
Bad rule.
It's not just the Jew. It is the way that black people reason. It's not the fault of Nigeria. If in 1945, when the killers in Just, because it was the first killers in Just in 45, we have now the Azizi, where one of the Muslim intelligent gives everything. A who 1945, 1947, 1953, 1959, consistent killing after killing, after killing, after killing. And you think they will love you? I don't understand it. Who says no? Failure to control the den is what you're witnessing today. And they said we should submit our number value.
I know.
Have you seen the videos where they are telling their wives and their children on how to shoot every person? Have you seen it? Did the Indian policeman call for the arrest?
No.
Did Ohanese call for the arrest?
No.
Did Yibo Popos call for the arrest? They're just because I came here to tell you to prepare for what is to come. They said I should be killed. And you know foreigners are very clever because the British advised them about to do. Every time they know that IPOB is not to mind you, you are wrong. They disgust all of them. The only person they found it fits to use something to is the farmer here. Why? Because they know IPOB is with you. You think foreigners are silly? They have looked at all of them. Without IPOB support, you are not. Absolutely not. That is why all of you here today must rise up and do the deed for. What is that deed for? Now Tony, are you going to join IPOB? Some will not, everyone will beg among you, some will sell their houses. Because when it happened to the Jews, they were begging for their land, they were begging for their sheep, their sons of school, to allow them to die. They were begging. It is up to you. Tony, I was in Ayapalo, my hearsay. It's up to you to support the emancipation of your people if you like. I can't thank you. Biafra doesn't belong to me. Does not belong to, in fact, my village and my father is the hearsay, doesn't even belong to him. It's for you to do it as you please. If you want to be slaves for life, that's entirely up to you. But as for me and this very family of IPOB, we have chosen freedom. And that freedom must come. That freedom must come.
Amen.
That freedom must come. How many Americans are passionate in Dizu? How many white Americans in Dizu are collecting their passion? You know, in Germany, as an African, you know, they ask you, is it not, don't you think it's time to go home? Am I correct?
That's true.
You have your passports home. Very simply, don't you think it's time to to go home? I don't know how some of you live in this shape. It's so familiar. We believe in life after death. And if after this life, you succeed in making it to heaven, that is assuming that you did not gossip to Goodwill and wear rice and egg.